Our meeting to our first start of business will be the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody to our April sixteenth council meeting. We have a lot on the agenda tonight, so.
We're gonna make an amendment to the agenda, please.
We have an amendment to.
Um, we want to add a K for the liquor license application and L for a farm lease. It's a farm lease.
That's a motion.
Make a motion to amend the agenda.
A second.
The motion is second to amend the agenda to add items K and L to the administrative portion. Randy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
David is. Let's move to our consent agenda. March nineteenth twenty twenty four regular council meeting minutes, April second twenty twenty four council workshop meeting minutes to approve Chelsea's say through to the park board, Pine Island FFA request to use city parking lot, approve Lauren Johnson to planning and zoning commission and the MPCA certificate of commendation.
I'll move the consent agenda.
I'll second.
The motion is second. I would like to publicly thank both Chelsea and Warren for stepping up to fill those positions on our committees. It's a needed thing and it's a commitment, so I appreciate their willingness to do that. The motion is second. Any other discussion? Where's Randy?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And David will be aye to the consent agenda. Public input, do we have any written correspondence?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
No written correspondence. And second, we have a Miss Angie's place update. There she is. Absolutely. Come up to the lectern and introduce yourself. And welcome.
Hello, my name is Angie Severson with Miss Angie's Place in Pine Island. Um, thank you, Mayor, and thank you council members for having me here today. Um, I just wanted to give an update on Miss Angie's Place. We have been in our new building for almost a year now, and we absolutely love it. One thing I didn't love, though, when we purchased it, I was hoping that we would be tax exempt, which we are not. So, um, I am coming today to kind of give an update on how we're doing, but then also do request any help you can offer in getting getting information ready for next year in hopes of getting that property tax exempt. So, um, that'll be kind of tricky. Uh, other things we have happening, we're gonna do Kids Fest or sorry, Kids Day again for Cheese Fest. And so that'll be happening June first. It's from eight thirty to eleven thirty. I think we have everything set up for that. We also received a grant through a foundation in Rochester called Liz Quackenbush, I think. Um, and that money is to go towards a garden. So instead of having a plot at the community garden, we're gonna build a garden right at our property. And so if you know of people that would be interested in helping out with that, um, just kind of helping, I'm gonna work with the lumberyard. They're gonna come out tomorrow and kind of look and get a quote for building raised beds. So if you know any people that'd be interested in helping with that, that would be fabulous. And I think that's about it.
And how's how's the chicken coop working?
I haven't used it yet. So chickens are coming to the egg partners May second. So, uh, Mr. P and I will be getting the chicken coop ready for its inhabitants, so. Which I think I probably have to renew my permit too, I bet. I could look into that. Okay. Yep.
Yeah, I'd like to say publicly too, thank you for, uh, your partnership with different groups in town, getting students involved and interacting like you did with the fire department. That was.
Yeah, yeah, we actually had Jase Lee's mom came today to make cards with the kids and because she asked if they could make cards and I said it'd be real really important if she could come speak with them, so she did. And yeah, so it was pretty cool too. He was the student that passed away, um, in August, so. All right.
Thank you so much for your work. I was gonna say too, uh, congratulations to the public works on your certificate. That one, you guys do an awesome job. Thank you.
Sheriff's Department.
How you doing, sir?
Good evening, members of the council. Well, looks like I brought enough for everybody.
We made it easier tonight.
Yeah. Uh, so what you have there is our twenty twenty three annual report. Uh, I won't go through it because everybody'd be falling asleep by the time I got done. Uh, there's a lot of stats in there, not exactly interesting stuff, but there's about four pages of new employees in there, which twenty twenty three was kind of our year of hiring and promoting. If I remember right from in there, I think it was every six business days, we either hired or promoted somebody throughout the entire year. Uh, so it was a difficult year. We we struggled with our staffing for a while, but we all got through it. And I think we were probably one of the only agencies in the state that can probably say currently we have full staffing. Granted, we have three of them finishing school still, um, but they all have gotten offers and are able to start after they graduate next month. Um, we actually, we were waiting for one more uh, person who was leaving. So we opened it up. We actually had seven applicants for zero job openings. So we'll be opening that back up, but, uh, we've come a long ways, especially considering, I think, when I looked the other day, there are two hundred and ninety job openings in the state. Many of them having multiple positions open, but, um, we can say we will not be one of them here soon, so. It was very good. Um, one of our other big things that we're working on lately, and we finally kind of took our last administrative step, is our body camera program. Uh, today we got approval from the county board and we did our public hearing portion of it, which is required by statute. And tomorrow, basically, we'll be ordering up seventy body cameras, which will be going between all of our patrol division as well as our ADC. Um, it's a project I've been working on almost since I started over two years ago. Um, it is a very time-consuming project. A lot goes into it. Uh, so we're at the point now where we can at least be purchasing them. The hope is that they will be deployed in the jail by July first, and we're hoping fall for our dispatch. And that has to do with the infrastructure for patrol of having all of our squads outfitted and all of the internet connections and a lot of those other things that go into setting up squads. So that one's gonna take a little longer, but we're also kind of hoping that we work out some of those, you know, small issues when they're in the ADC before we put them out on the street. Uh, so just to prove that today, um, some other good news that came from the county board meeting this morning as to do with the SRO positions here in Pine Island and Zambrota. Uh, we have a tentative deal that we can go forward with contracting for next year. Um, so those discussions will probably happen this month, next month. With, I don't know all of the details, but it was whatever was agreed upon in the last meeting, and it'll most likely be a one-year contract. So that next year, everybody that's involved in this decision-making can all come to the table and kind of work it out that way. Thank you. Um, I think that'll be a much smoother process, but for twenty twenty five, sounds like, uh, we're gonna be good there. Pine Island will probably be getting a new SRO because the Pine Island SRO will be moving to Zambrota. So he, that's wants to be closer to home, and so we'll probably begin. I know. I'll make sure that he's aware of your un-happy.
Also, he'll hear about it.
They've never really given us a bad one, so.
Yeah.
We we have been very lucky with our SRAs. We've had some really good SAs, so I'm sure whoever we get next, step right into Cody's huge shoes.
That's right. So we're, I worked with the camera program. Were you able to get any kind of support from the state or federal funds for that or?
So that is being paid entirely through public safety funds. Granted, it's about half of the money we got from it, but it is at least coming through those funds rather than taxpayers. So now we have to start already planning for five years down the road when easy reached the end of their life. How are we going to be, um, budgeting for them in two thousand and twenty nine? But if we can start planning now, it's a good time, so that hopefully by that time we have a plan in place, grants, funds, whatever it might be.
Thank you for your work on that, though. It's exciting that you have that.
And they are all looking forward to it because they all see the benefits of having them because we don't have deputies that the body cameras are gonna hurt. It only helps them so that people actually see what truly happens. And, uh, really, that's ninety-five percent of the things that are seen on the body cameras are, you know, positive. I've I've I use them for several years. They definitely help when complaints come in because you can see an unbiased video right in front of you of how things actually happened and that usually resolves issues pretty quickly. Um, great evidentiary value. Uh, our county attorneys are quite excited because they also help quite a bit in investigating calls that the deputies are on.
Thank you for that.
So we are, as I said, a long time coming, a lot of work, but we are really looking forward to.
Thanks for all your work and update. Much appreciated.
Any other questions? I, uh, I think I hit the high points of what we have going on, but.
Y'all are gonna be in the parade, right?
Uh, so, yes, we will be in the parade. So one of the things we're working on, um, I think most people know Jen. And Jen's kind of in the past has been the community engagement deputy, and it's kind of been on her to handle all of these community events. Well, more so now she is the community engagement coordinator. And so we are actually putting together a community engagement team so that we can make sure that we have more people involved in this, so it's not just being put on one person. We can do a lot more planning, have more people involved, we can better plan for it, and, uh, I think we'll definitely benefit from having her more in that coordinator position than I'd always just. So the long answer. Yes.
We look forward to it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, guys. Have a good rest of your evening.
All right, council, we're gonna move right into administration, and the first item tonight is gonna be the audit presentation, which we will be representing here. Who's gonna be speaking? Tyler?
Yep.
Tyler, can you hear us?
Yep, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir. War is gonna be yours.
Awesome. I'll go go on then and I'll tell, uh, I'll tell you when to switch slides and stuff like that, or I can share my screen as well if that's.
Tyler, can you just hold on one moment?
Yeah, for sure.
Sorry, we're just having minor technical difficulties.
All good.
Okay, we are good to go.
Okay, perfect. So I can just tell you, we're gonna go to the next slide. Um, so my name is Tyler C. Um, I'm an audit manager at Abdo, and I'm giving you guys the twenty twenty three financial statement audit presentation tonight. Um, so what I'll be going over is our audit opinion as well as our responsibility as auditors. I'll then get into the financial results for all the, uh, general fund of other governmental funds as well as the enterprise funds. And then I'll end it off with what we like to call key performance indicators. Uh, so moving on to the next slide. Um, so our responsibility as auditors is to issue an opinion on the city's financial statements. We are issuing an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion on your financial statement, so the opinion you would be striving for in a financial statement audit. We also do some testing on state statute throughout the course of our audit, and we do have one compliance issue noted for this year, which I'll just go over right now on the next slide. Um, so we do have two audit findings for this year's audit. Uh, the first finding is preparation of financial statements, which is an internal control finding. Um, this is a recurring finding that the city receives every year. Um, really what the finding is, is just that we as your auditors not only per- uh, perform the odd, but we also draft the financial statements for the city. Technically, the financial statements are a responsibility of city management, so then, uh, this is technically an internal control finding. Uh, so this is a pretty common finding that we give out to all the clients that we draft the financial statements for and just technically needs to be in the report. Uh, so that's nothing new. Uh, the one compliance issue that did come up this year was around accepting donations. Uh, and just that all your donations that the city receives should technically be, um, accepted through resolution at council meetings. Um, I know that the city, I think your city council does typically do this, but we did find, um, a donation this year during the course of the audit that was not formally approved. So just kind of a reminder there on that, uh, compliance requirement. Um, so then moving on to the next slide, getting into the financial results now. First thing we're showing here is your general fund fund balance in comparison to the following year's budget and the city's fund balance policy. So the yellow line is your budget from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty four. Uh, the orange line is the city's actual general fund balance as percent of the following year's budget. And then the black line is the city's fund balance policy, which is to maintain a fund balance at thirty-five percent of your following year's budget. Now, what we see here at the end of twenty twenty three is that the general fund budget was actually at thirty-three percent of your following year's budget. So something to just keep an eye on there because that is a couple of percentage points or one point nine percent below technically the fund balance policy. Uh, and you know, I think the main reason for falling under that policy is because of the the rise in that general fund budget. Uh, but just something to keep an eye on moving forward for sure. Now, if you were looking at your general fund budget to actual results for the year, so in the left column here, you're gonna see your final twenty twenty three budget. The middle column, you'll see your actual results. On the right, you're gonna see the variance with that final budget. So looking at your top line revenues, your revenues came in just under the budget, about five thousand dollars under the budget, so extremely comparable to budget there. Your expenditures were about a hundred thousand dollars under budget. Main reason for this variance would be, um, less culture and recreation expenses as well as less capital outlay expenses than budgeted, uh, in your general fund. On the general fund also has a lot of transfers in and out, so they have some transfers in from enterprise fund, some transfers out mostly to, uh, capital equipment as well as the library fund. Um, so all in all, after that revenue and expense, after the transfer activity, uh, your general fund did increase about a hundred thousand dollars. And that bottom line, one point four seven million is your year-end general fund balance. Now, if you were just looking at your general fund revenues by type over the last three years, spoke between taxes, intergovernmental revenue, which is mostly like local government aid and other grants, uh, charges for services and then other revenue sources, kind of your miscellaneous interest earnings, that kind of thing. Uh, so all in all, I think what we can see here for the most part is that revenue's been pretty consistent. Uh, your tax levy being your main source of revenue, and that's kind of been the your main revenue increase over the last couple of years. Same format to this graph, but now we're looking at your expenditures by type. Spoke between general government, public safety, public works, then other expenses in the general fund, mostly like culture and recreation and capital outlay. So, you know, what we see here is kind of a gradual increase in expenses for like general government, public safety. Public works was extremely comparable the last couple of years, and then your other expenses, stuff like capital outlay and parks erect did increase a little bit, uh, this past year. Now, this slide here, we're just looking at all the city's different special revenue funds. Uh, so the city has several special revenue funds open right now. Top half of the graph just shows, um, the change in fund balance between twenty twenty three and twenty twenty two. And then the bottom half just shows the different components that make up those fund balance, uh, mostly restricted and committed balances. Um, so overall, the special revenue funds did increase about a hundred thousand dollars this past year. Main increases being in your charitable gambling donations fund, um, as well as, uh, increases in your library and stormwater funds. Now, looking at capital project funds, um, so kind of same format to this graph as the special revenue funds. Top half, you're just looking at the change in fund balance for all your capital project funds. Bottom half, just looking at the makeup of the fund balance, the total fund balance for your funds. Uh, so overall, the capital project funds increased about a hundred and seventeen thousand this past year. Two main, um, elements would be your capital equipment fund, which increased about four hundred thousand dollars, mostly due to a transfer in from your general fund. And then the twenty twenty three street project did decrease by about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in fund balance, just due to that twenty twenty three street project, project expenses. Now, your debt service funds, just highlighting, um, all the current debt service funds open, your total cash and assets in each fund as well as the bonds outstanding in each fund, and then also the maturity date. And the bottom half of the slide just shows, uh, the next ten years of your debt service obligations for all of these, uh, bonds. So then, looking at the next slide, now we're getting into the enterprise funds. Uh, so the enterprise funds are gonna have the same format here, uh, for each slide. Top half, what you're gonna see is your operating, uh, receipts in orange, operating payments in the yellow, as well as your debt payments in the black section. Uh, and then the bottom half here, you're gonna see your cash balance, and they're also gonna have a line there that shows like a minimum target balance, which is kind of like an industry standard for like a goal of cash on hand to have. Um, so for the water fund, uh, more expenses this year in the water fund due to various project costs. Uh, but because of debt issued this year that hasn't all been spent down, your water fund cash balance is, um, higher this year than it was last year and well above the year, um, operating target balance. And when we go to the sewer funds here on the same same format, really kind of the same story as the water fund. Your expenses did increase, um, this past year due to a lot of different project costs. But on the bottom half of the slide, you do see the overall cash balance did rise from twenty twenty two, and again, mostly just due to some debt proceeds that haven't quite been spent down yet. Now, evergreen, uh, your evergreen fund, um, you know, most year this fund kind of, for the most part, kind of breaks even from a cash perspective when it comes to, you know, your operating income taking and the debt payments and operating receipts. Um, one thing to note here is that target balance in this fund did decrease, uh, quite a lot this past year because your debt has now matured. Um, so that's why that that line is kind of going down there between twenty two and twenty three. Um, and then overall, your cash balance is is really close to kind of that target, uh, amount. And then the cemetery fund, um, cash has stayed pretty level in the cemetery fund over the last four years. One thing that kind of jumps on this slide is an increase in operating revenue this past year, and that was mostly due to a twenty thousand dollar donation received. One more enterprise fund, your deputy registrar fund. Um, the thing we'll note here is in twenty twenty three, your operating expenses were higher than these past years due to like payroll and insurance costs this past year. Um, but otherwise, your your cash balance isn't super high, but it is above kind of that two months of operating cost target balance for that fund. And now here, we're just looking at your pool cash and investments, um, by fund type, cash on hand at year end at about eight point nine million for twenty, uh, twenty three. Main reason that the cash on hand increased from last year is kind of due to those water and sewer bond proceeds that haven't been spent down at year end, so that's the main reason for the cash increase. Uh, now here, this is where we end off with key performance indicators. What we do here is we can compare the city of Pine Island, which is the black line, with class four cities in the state, which is cities of ten thousand population or less throughout the whole state of Minnesota. And then we also compare Pine Island with cities in Goodyear County in the yellow, and that green color is cities in Olmsted County. Uh, another thing I'll note on these graphs when you're looking at them, we only have comparison data from twenty twenty one as our most recent comparison, which is kind of inconvenient when we're doing this, uh, but we just don't have that data available yet to us from the state. Um, so here, what we're looking at is tax rate and tax per capita. And for the most part, these kind of tell a similar story where Pine Island is probably a little bit above the averages, uh, for most of these peer groups. I mean, again, we don't have the recent data from the last couple of years, but probably a little bit above the average and maybe right at the average for cities in Goodyear County for taxes per capita. Here, this is a debt, uh, debt slide, so we're looking at debt per capita and then your debt, uh, service expenditures as a percentage of current expenditures. Um, so here, you know, again, it's just kind of hard when you don't have data for the last, you know, year to look at to really compare yourselves. But probably, you know, really close on average in cities for in Goodyear County for debt per capita and a bit above the averages for class four cities and cities in Olmsted County. And then your debt service expenditures, um, as a percent of total expenditures or total current expenditures. That can be volatile. It kind of depends on when you issue debt or refund debt, so sometimes there's kind of a swing there. Uh, but, you know, overall, a little bit above the averages in the peer groups. And then same format here, but just looking at your current operating expenses per capita and then your capital expenses per capita, which is like your project-related cost per capita. So, uh, current expenses, looks like you're really close to the average for class four cities and a little bit below the average uh, for cities in Goodyear County and then probably above the average for cities in Olmsted County. And then capital expenditures, this is always pretty volatile for every city because it just totally depends on when your projects take place. So twenty twenty was a bit busy. I got excited. Um, twenty twenty was a busy capital year, busy project year, where all the years you've been kind of below the average in capital expenses per capita. And that's all I got, so I'll open it up for any questions or comments when I do the audit.
Council, any questions regarding the audit that was presented? Came back pretty similar to, um, previous year, which is good, so. Now, I think we are, the presentation itself, I appreciate the work, uh, Abdo has done on our audits. And the diligence that has gone into to, uh, doing your your research and making sure that things are running smoothly. And, uh, I hope that, it sounds like city staff has been very helpful in making sure you are given the information that you're needed to, so. Do you have any questions for, on the city side or for council?
I don't think I have any questions for you, no, but yeah, I would echo that, you know, city staff has always been really helpful to us. I mean, our audit's always efficient. We get it done pretty quickly. Uh, go there for a couple of days each year to really get it all done and get the report put together, and then they review it pretty quickly for us, so it definitely has been an efficient process.
No, I appreciate that, so. No, thank you for the presentation. Very thorough, so thank you.
Awesome. Well, thanks for having me and have a great meeting.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a request to accept the audit as presented.
I'll move to accept the audit.
A second.
We have a motion in a second to accept the audit. City staff, you're satisfied as well?
Yep, Abdo does a pretty thorough job, so they're really good to work with, then. Yeah.
All right, Randy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
And David will be aye. All right, council, you're gonna move on to item B, which is a public hearing for a street vacation.
I can take this, Mr. Mayor. Um, so in February, the city received a. Um so in February, the city received a petition to vacate the undeveloped portion of Bioscience Drive. Uh has been advertised for the public hearing and uh all the affected. Landowners were notified of the public hearing, which um is just one landowner around. Um surrounding the portion that would be vacating, the city has not received any um written correspondence prior to the meeting. Um so for the street vacation, uh we will be having the public hearing this evening.
We'll take the motion to open for the public hearing on the street vacation.
A motion to open for public hearing.
Second.
Motion in a second, Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
David will be I. As we open for public hearing on the street vacation. Do you need anybody here to speak on property? Five more seconds. All right, they'll take motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close hearing.
Second.
Brandy.
Hi.
David. All right, we are closed to the public hearing on the street vacation, which will lead us to item C, resolution twenty-four fourteen, approving the street vacation.
So this is just a resolution um which would actually vacate that undeveloped portion of Bioscience Drive. I would like to note that there are existing utility facilities um in that portion. And the city would retain easements for those utilities um for drainage as well. And that's notated in the resolution before you.
Move resolution twenty-four fourteen.
A second.
Motion in a second and for uh. Anybody that might be online listening to, this is property that's located out um. Behind Bird's Auto towards Brian Hill's property as well, just for reference. Um anything on your end, Bob?
No, I just note that you've got a four member council, so you've got a quorum here, and because this is petition for you, just need a majority of the quorum to uh to vote for this. It sounds like maybe you're gonna have a unanimous vote, but regardless, so you have you have enough members here to uh go forward, so.
Excellent, thank you. Uh Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
David will be I. Item D is gonna be a public hearing for the Sempra Housing and Commercial Rehabilitation Project. You heard this last month, is that you?
Yeah.
Come on up and introduce yourself, thank you for coming up tonight.
We're here tonight um just to have a public hearing for any public comments, concerns, questions that anybody may have.
I'll move to open public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
David will be I. It's an opportunity for the public to participate, if you have any questions. It's a very healthy program and it's been in town for a while, so we appreciate the work that's being done. Like to get the word out to more people involved. Anybody? One second, anybody, public hearing. Guys will take a motion to close.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
David will be I. And so this, just for reference too for anybody listening, this is part of the the process as you hold public hearings.
Yep, about halfway through, so.
And just to get the input and then.
Yep.
From the, from your perspective, how's the reception going in town?
Um good so far, we're about halfway through, I've got apps for about a half of what we need. Um we're still feeling the effects of COVID and everything that happened, but we're coming out of it slowly but surely, so, yeah.
We take it a while, right?
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council, we're gonna move on to item E, which is a request to approve the outdoor warning sirens unit with Olmsted County.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um our emergency management directors and myself have been working with Olmsted County Emergency Management Director Jacobson. Um on updating our outdoor um warning sirens, so that'd be the tornado sirens that you hear um going off. Essentially, the agreement staying the same as it was, we just wanted to update the verbiage. Um the city is, will remain responsible for purchasing the sirens. And if there's any replacement, we would be responsible for the replacement, however, Olmsted County. Um with no charge, they maintain them, and then they also do preventative maintenance on them as well. So they'll have their techs come and look at them, and then that's when they can let us know. If they need to be replaced, and then the agreement also outlines when the warning systems would be activated.
With that, is there? Just for reference, so the community understands, if the sirens are activated, they're coming out of Olmsted County. The city has the ability, there's people in the city that have the ability to request the sirens be activated, correct? So it's not strictly relying on Olmsted County to observe, but we have the ability in the city if. The need arose arises that the city can request.
Correct. And um it would be reminded to, um sometimes we get complaints about why. They aren't activated for certain reasons, but they are activated for inclement weather. Because they need to go inside and seek shelter, and so I think sometimes we get, people wonder why we don't activate them for other city. Um so.
Any questions on the end of the council?
Mayor. Yes, sir, just I I have to give out a compliment to the county, I think paragraph seven, I had requested some changes and it looks to me like they were all made. Does that sound right to you?
Yes.
Yeah, so uh the compliment is just that we're, this is an agreement that we've had in the past, and so of course, it was a sort of template agreement. The last paragraph deals with liability and limiting the parties, the counties and the city's liability. And I just wanted to update that language in a couple of ways, and the county um took it verbatim, um which normally there's a little more. Push and pull to get that done, so I appreciate that uh from the county.
Well, it's good to hear.
We can move approval for the outdoor warning there in agreement. For Olmsted County.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the updated agreement between Olmsted County and. Island of the Warning Systems. Any other discussion, council? City staff for working on this, Bob, thank you. Uh Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
David will be I. All right, we're gonna move on to item F, looking right along here, a request to approve the outrun interchange. Quick claim deed.
So what you have before you is a quick claim, quick claim deed. Um what this is for is during the outrun interchange project, um. There was a lot of different land that was transferred to the city for right of way. Um and there is excess right of way, and essentially, a lot of that was put into um the city's name while that was taking place. What this does now is transfer um just the. Right of way portion of County Route twelve back to Olmsted County because it is their road and it. It essentially is their right of way, and they would be responsible for all of the needs of that portion of the road. So it's just cleaning up some of the right of way. We like to do cleanup. I'll move approval for the outrun interchange with indeed.
Second.
Motion in a second. Google, clean up work on here, well, cleaning of the land, any other discussion? Otherwise, we'll take, Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
David will be I. We're gonna move on to EDA request to approve advertising contract, get that promotion out there and. Mitch, how are you?
I'm doing good, Mayor. Uh so what you have before you is a credit application and media agreement with Gray Media Group. Uh and the EDA, what we're doing is partnering with KTTC, that this is their organization. Uh to create an advertising campaign uh for the summer months to highlight our. Uh parks and recreation and things to do in Pine Island. That's something that we've been talking about doing, we've tried to do some things in the past with Google Ads, stuff like that, so. We're gonna try to do something with KTTC. Uh the EDA has already approved this media agreement. Uh with up to three thousand dollars in spending, which includes the production of the advertising with KTC and then them. Running ads, uh and part of that agreement is they're going to help us uh structure because different slots cost different amounts, so. They're gonna figure out a way to best utilize that three thousand dollars so we can have the most impact on it. But to bring this to you guys, just I'll also get approval from the city to authorize that three thousand dollars for this project.
Advertise our city, I'll make a motion uh to approve the advertising contract.
A second.
A motion in a second, so you would act as my person?
Yes.
Correct on this and be able to work with city staff on where they want to do that.
Yep, yeah, we're hoping to begin production in May and then run the ads in June until we're out of the funds that are allocated for it.
Mayor, just a question I raised with Elizabeth earlier and Mitch, I sorry, I didn't run it past you, but um. So uh this all makes sense, I think this is fine if if the EDA wants to do that. EDA though can make contracts itself, I mean, it's fu- I think it's fine for you to wanna sign off on what the EDA does since you do finance them, fund them. But um i- so just given that and because lawyers are persnickety about it, what why wouldn't the EDA be the one to enter the contract?
Yeah, I think there was some confusion on my part about uh the EIN because the EDA doesn't have its own tax ID number, it's run under the city. So I guess my confusion was if the EDA can use the same tax ID as the city, and if they can, then we can just uh sign off as the EDA.
Uh but yeah, I don't have a thought about that, I guess, other than I see that the uh the contract itself doesn't have a federal tax ID filled in, so. So but um yes, if the EDA shares a tax ID with, see, I don't see a problem with that. Again, it doesn't matter in a three thousand dollar contract, but I mean, I just, you know. The EDA does, I I want the EDA to understand it does have a power to make decisions, they need to be run by the city, but you can enter contracts through the EDA, so.
Perfect. Were you signing up? We'll get Bryson.
All right, ready to vote? Thanks for doing work on this. Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
And I'll go I. Good to do, thank you. All right, council, item H, which is gonna be a resolution twenty-four dash fifteen, accepting Pine Island Area Foundation. Uh Smith donation. Towards playground equipment.
Yes, so uh council, as you know, one of the priorities of the city. Is to establish a inaccessible playground within the city, so we've been working on um. Getting funds for that, and so um the city did request from the Pine Island Area Community Foundation. Um that they'd be willing to donate towards the cause and so um together with Smith, they are donating two thousand five hundred dollars to. On the initiative for the inclusive playground equipment.
Kind of work in progress. Yeah.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty-four fifteen, accepting a donation. Or donation accepting in line.
We got a motion in a second to accept the donation, uh public thank you to the foundation for. Their wanting to participate, put money towards this, it's been a project the city's been working on for quite some time, so. Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
And I will I. And let's move on to item I, which is request to approve the job description posting for the finance clerk positions. Again, another project they've been working on.
So I know we tabled this from last month, unfortunately, I'm still working with our. Where, because of the wage study, we're. In the middle of rewriting job descriptions with all staff and we're in the middle of getting information. We can guess at what that pay would be, but I would prefer to post it accurately from the beginning. And so I request that we table this once again until we can get that data back and that we can post this at what the correct. Just because I think this is a position that we'll see um one of the greatest changes um internally, and so.
So we can extend her not retaining?
Well, I know, we we were planning to have someone in there, May or June, so I'm still okay with the timeline. Um we're just probably looking more at June now, but Carol and I have worked out a plan, Carol's been expediting all of her. Um wage study information to David Jones so that we can get that position done first. Um so she's been very cooperative in that.
Um I'll move to table the, we need, this is a motion, this action, I'll move to table the finance clerk position posting.
Yeah, I'll second.
That work.
Second table. And Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
David will be I. And yeah, we we knew going into this is gonna be a little bit of a workaround, so. Right, let's move on to our next item, which is gonna be a request to approve the raffle permit for Pine Island basketball.
Baseball. Right? Oh, sorry, yeah, I'll sit here and behave.
All right, this is.
Yeah, I'll move to prove the raffle permit for Pine Island Youth Basketball.
A second.
Motion in a second, any other discussions? We have all their paperwork in, we're happy with that. All right, Brandy.
All right.
Mike.
Hi.
And David will be I. Move on to item K. I didn't write fast enough.
It's the liquor license application. So be before you, Mr. Mayor and Council, is a uh. Application for a temporary liquor license along with a certificate of liability insurance. The application is from the Pine Island Cheese Festival. I'm not sure, I know we have representatives in the audience tonight, I'm not sure if you guys will kind of wanna know what's going on um. For the event, it would be an event or a cheese fest.
Sure.
So this is the wine and cheese event um in the creamery. Um it would be. Um the event that we have been working towards for a few years. Um there will be a full weekend of wine and cheese around the world served um in the creamery and out of the creamery. Um to go along with all of our cheese festival activities.
Exciting.
Yes.
Who's point per, are you point person in town?
Yeah.
Excellent, all right.
So I will move approval of the liquor license application.
Well, second.
Got a motion in a second. Thank you for your work on this. Any other discussion? Right around the corner.
No, it's like no time away.
Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
And David is uh. Nice to keep that building. Um item L is a farming lease. This is from Mr. McAmara.
Yes, so this is from the property that the city just purchased on the north end of town um from Walters. Uh Mr. McAmara has uh farmed the property and now is the part of the purchase agreement is that he would be able to continue to. Um farm that property, he had a lease with the Walters, but because the city not purchased that, that. We would need to enter an agreement with them. Uh I will say, I sent this to Mr. McAmara, I have not heard back on whether he. Has any changes or not, however, I know he's anxious to get groundwork. So I'm asking council to approve this, hoping he does not have changes. If he has changes, then we'll have to figure that out to get it back in front of you, but I wanted to get it in front of you as soon as I could. Um for him, so um. We are changing a whole lot in terms of what he had with. Yeah.
Yeah, good, yeah, yeah, I've looked over the lease, it's fine, I made a couple of little tiny changes. I I'd suggest to Elizabeth's point, you know, if you wanna approve it, subject to the city attorney signing off on any additional changes, that's fine, and you know, we do that. A lot of the stuff will be ticky tacky if he has.
Just our first lease of billable land, that's fine.
Uh you know, Mayor, uh council, I think that's, haven't we done that?
I think we've done one a few years ago.
Second, second.
Interesting, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll move approval for the farming, pending changes signed off by our legal team.
Second.
A second, that, that allows, if he has anything he wants to tweak and talk to Elizabeth or Stephen, if they can do it right. Because, yeah, he's gonna wanna get working, so. We have motion in a second.
Hi.
Hi.
And David will be high. Okay, we're gonna move into, there's nothing listed under planning commission, so we'll jump into public works and engineering, which is approving the dredging vote for the Eighth Street Retention Pond. This is part of our discussion from the workshop.
Yep, so the Eighth Street Pond and the Kispert Development, we've spoken about this the last few years, that that pond really needs to be dredged out and cleaned out. Mr. Robertson had received two different quotes, one from Schumacher Excavating and one from the Cook Excavating. And Schumacher Excavating came in with the lower quote to dredge the pond.
Correct, I'll move approval of the dredging quote, working at the Schumacher for the Eighth Street Retention Pond.
One second.
Motion in a second, and just for reference, can you explain to what that retention pond does out there and why we have it?
Well, when that development is built, those ponds are put in to catch the sun of it, so it's not going to the river or any other place. Over the years, it's filled in, and the development's pretty much built, so I have no problem getting cleaned up to get the cattails out of there.
Sweet.
Yes, and we, yeah, we started talking about this a few years ago. So even those comments.
The project for a while.
Yep.
Right now, we haven't done it, so.
Sounds good.
Any other questions, council? Thanks for your work on it. Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
And David is high. Okay, we're gonna move on to the legal portion of our meeting.
Mayor, council, I don't have anything other than what we'll talk about. I think we're gonna talk a little bit in closed session. Yeah, so other than that, I have nothing. Thanks, man.
But, thanks.
I'll move claims.
One second.
Motion in a second. Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
And David is high. Brings us to apartment updates, and we are gonna start with the administrator, busy month.
Has been very busy. I've kind of summed up everything in my report. My report is shorter this month, but it was a busier month, but we spent a lot of time in St. Paul working on funding for the sanitary sewer district, so by the next meeting, we should know whether or not we have funding, so.
There we go. Thanks for the work on the Pines newsletter.
Yes, so that credit needs to go to Stephen, so we kind of bug city staffed, everyone kind of put a little blurb in there, and Stephen compiles that for us, so.
And make a push to the public, if you are wanting updates, please get signed up for the announcements. It's a very, very good way to see what's going on. Library. Good evening.
Unmute, okay. I just have a couple of things tonight. I'm Rachel Gray, I'm librarian here in town. We, our biggest news is that we are trying to, with Selco, which is our regional library, and I think there's thirty-five public libraries, we're trying to get a uniform circulation date, so when people check out things, it's always the same period. I think a couple of libraries held back on it, but I know a lot of us have gone with it, so when you come into the library, you'll see that things are checking out for twenty-one days instead of fourteen days, and there'll be two renewals, just like normal, or like there have been in the past. New items are kind of exempted from that. Those are going out for fourteen days, just so more people can get them. So I'm really excited about that and hope that that makes it a lot easier for a lot of our patrons when they come in. Otherwise, our upcoming events are summer reading. Sign up starts June third, so stay tuned for that. It's a recycling theme this year. We've got sip and spell with the brewery on the twenty-fifth, so it'll be next week, Thursday. Book sale on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh at the library over the garage sale. We're doing that from nine to two. And then something that came up that I didn't have a chance to get on my report is I was talking to a contractor about getting our masonry redone on our stairs, and it sounds like it's gonna be a pretty expensive project, so we might be looking at getting grants or other funding to help out with that. So he's talking about needing to take down all of the masonry around our brand-new stairs to make it so that it works in the future, so.
Take it down and rebuild it.
The stairs will be able to stay, the steps themselves, but all of the apron-ing and the bricks around the stairs will come down and get redone.
Redone, okay.
So, stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
Any questions for me?
Thanks for your work, and that's exciting to see the recycling theme.
Oh, it'll be, it'll be great, yep. And if you have any water bottles, extra water bottles, we have a bin in the library in our front entryway. Heidi will be needing them for a project. Empties, rinse them out. If you've got a pop once, rinse them out. Otherwise, if they're just water, you can drop them off. Do you want this muted again, or should I leave it be? Okay.
Tom, or Todd has his own microphone.
So are you.
No, I'd just like to thank the public for staff for the work. Guys do every job.
Yeah.
Yeah, good group. And I'd also like to welcome Chelsea State to the court for her.
Now that you're in, you know what you signed up for, right?
She'll get there. Don't scare away yet.
Those guys are all putting the benches out. Yeah. Getting benches out and getting things set up. Thank you for that, and just to put out a bit, a note too to the public, where their chamber's working on the flower baskets too, so Public Works helps with that, so people wanna donate for that, they can do so and get flower baskets out. That'll be nice. Anything else on your end? You're good? All right, EDA?
So on May, I'm on mute. No worries, we're good.
Oh.
So on May ninth, we are hosting our business after hours from five to seven at Bird's Auto. That is for all of our local businesses to attend, so if anyone out there wants to come, we'll be there from five to seven. We'll have appetizers and drinks for anyone who shows up.
What day is that again?
May. May ninth, so Thursday night. That's all I got.
Apartment.
Sitting in the, Paul Ballers probably pretty much on page one of this year, so. Say, does the herbies come up and they? Yeah, she's supposed to play that, so.
Forty-five days away.
We're getting there. Sheriff's office presented. All right, anybody else? Otherwise, I'll read for the closed session portion pursuant.
Mayor, can I stop? A hundred percent, I wanna put our friend Nikki on the spot that I am, I'm putting Nikki on the spot now. Nikki from the Birmingham community, who doesn't, isn't expected to say anything, but is there anything we should know before we talk in closed session about the real estate transaction that we've been working on with your attorney? Perfect, okay. Just wanted to make sure that you had a chance to weigh in. Okay, sorry.
No, but no problem. Pursuant to Minnesota statute, section one-three D point zero five, subdivision three C three, the meeting will be closed to discuss offers or counteroffers for the purchase or sale of real property by the city for the following properties, approximately eighty acres adjoining or near to the Highway fifty-two overpass. That land consists of an excess right-of-way obtained from the overpass project. A complete listing of the PIDs can be obtained from the city on request. Take a motion to close.
A motion to close, sure.
Motion in a second, Brandy.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
David will be high. And I thank everybody for coming out tonight.